All right, for those of you who are called into the system, just please make sure that you've got your computer audio muted and that you're using just your phone to use for audio purposes, okay? Otherwise it creates a ring in the system. So while you're waiting, please mute the phone, your cellphone or your landline that you're on, and then when you need to talk, you can unmute from there. You can also use the chat function if you have a question or you have an issue or something that's going on. Please just use that and we'll address you once we see the chat come up.
We're getting feedback.
So we've got somebody with a mute unmiked or unmuted. That's better. Thank you. Hello.
I have Marian on and Matt on. Anyone else?
I'm still here, Maria.
Maria, got Maria, okay. So I have Maria, Marian and Matt on phones. Is anybody else on phones? Roger that.
John Burmeister is here.
John, thank you. Okay. All right, we're ready. Good, Mr. Corey. Roger that. All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, March 25th to order. Again, as our country and world deals with COVID-19, and now as you hear that our community's starting to have cases, please look out for your teammates, your buddies, especially the elderly. Keep your distance, but also check on them periodically and certainly follow the CDC guidelines. So we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderwoman Dickman, if you'd lead us in the pledge from your location.
Be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'll try and be patient and slow because I know there's a little time between us. So Brian, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll.
Done. Here. Doorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee. Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock. Dickman.
Here.
Jopkin. And Ambrose.
Here.
We've got seven present, Your Honor. Roger, we have a quorum. Thank you, Brian.
I am also present.
Oh. Lee, you're present. We have eight present, Your Honor.
He has having issues logging in, so he'll probably be here. I'll send him another thing.
Yeah, we got Matt. Ben, you on? Patrick, you on? No. Okay, we'll continue. Yep. Okay, thank you, Brian. So protocol to quorum, because as we did last Wednesday, we have a different situation where some of our colleagues on the council are calling in. So we'll pause and know that there's a little time gap from hearing them. Please remember, everyone, that we are being fed to the community, so respect as we always do. If you do have cellphones or any other electronic, make sure they're on mute, especially folks that are on the audio. Brandon's out in the hallway. He'll let us know if there's public. Ms. Spiegel and him are in contact, so we'll do this like we did last week, but it worked very well. So, thank you. All right. Will an alderman please?
Mayor? This is Judith. I called in a little late. I apologize.
Yeah, we got you. Yeah, we got you.
Okay.
Okay. Will an alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for March 11th? I have a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion's been moved a second and it's approved. Good. Is there any, I know we have Ms. Spiegel, you have a good COVID-19 update for, so we'll listen to that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be a little more lengthy than normal, but it's probably the first time when we've been able to get together and provide a more comprehensive update. So staff began its COVID-19 preparations on March 6th, when a meeting was called for the local governments and our local healthcare systems with Dr. Katz. I'd like to spend some time talking about what we've been doing since. So for those who have asked kind of what our routine meetings are, there are many. Many are every day or every week. So there are three different coalition briefings. One is a larger group, one is the governments for the region, and then the PIO group. Those are all coordinated.
Sorry, if you haven't muted or if we could make sure we're all quiet here while she gives this briefing, I'd appreciate it. There's some background noise. Thank you.
So those three groups are coordinated through the EMA, which I'll talk about in a little more. Davenport, Benton North and Scott County, the mayors, the chair and the administrators all talk routinely through the week. Our department head team meets every morning to do a briefing of the current situation. After that, both police and fire have a briefing with their command staffs. Both police and fire also participate in routine meetings out at the emergency operations center. And then once a week, administration, HR and our six bargaining groups get together and discuss current needs. So primary coordination and response. The city is very involved in all of this, but under the Scott County Emergency Management Agency's authority. So they are the primary agency for the pandemic response, and they coordinate all of our joint meetings. We're working with them through supply needs and all of those types of things. So it's important that we maintain our regional relationship. The actual health side of it is governed by the Scott County and Rock Island County Health Department. So they're taking the lead in partnership with our healthcare providers and Genesis, Trinity and Community Healthcare. People have asked about what they can do to help or donations. The Salvation Army of the Quad Cities is our donation point, especially for things that are in critical need right now, things like PPE, masks, especially the N95 masks, surgical gowns, goggles, gloves, et cetera. And they've asked that you call 563-324-4808 to coordinate drop-offs because certain supplies are going to different locations. And on behalf of our organization, I wanted to say thank you for community support that we've been receiving. One of our local businesses, Industrial Technology Corporation on Rockingham Road, has actually manufactured hand sanitizer for us in a bulk quantity, and we were able to get that down into more personal quantities and get those into our police and fire apparatus so that our first responders are safe in the field. And then our local restaurants and some of our retailers have been extremely gracious in taking good care of our public safety personnel, and we'll be sharing some of that information on social media in the coming days. So speaking of personnel, as we had shared with the council, over the last week, we enacted two administrative policies, one associated with addressing emergencies when they happen, and then a specific response associated with COVID-19. One of the, I think, one of the great things that happened with the COVID-19 response is that all six of our bargaining units signed off, including HR. So it was an extraordinary, about three days of work between our HR department and our bargaining units to come up with a policy that all of our personnel are bound by, and has really set up a great set of parameters for our employees as we go through this. As of today, we have 43 full-time employees in travel quarantine. Much of that related to the timing of spring break, but the majority of those employees will be back to work full-time on Monday, April 6th. And we've been working, Mallory and I, on finalizing the classifications of essential and non-essential personnel under CISA guidelines, should we find our state in a stay-at-home provision from the governor. And then I'll provide a couple of service area updates. So public safety, Chief Sikorski and Chief Carlson have been working tirelessly with their management teams and our personnel. A huge kudos to Local 17 and UPPO. Basically, they've given all of their vacation time back this month. Anybody who had time off, Kelly days or otherwise, is coming back to work to make sure that we can have basically minimum staffing covered without a lot of stress on the other employees. They've done so very, very graciously, and their support all the way along has been really remarkable and appreciated. And luckily, we have four new recruits that are going through the Fire Academy, and they will be coming to the field a little early next week, but they are ready, and so we'll see them in the field starting on Sunday. Public Works and Neighborhood Services, Streets and Sewers have the beauty of social distancing because they're outside most of the time. So yes, the pothole crews are out right now. Transit is still free to our riders, so we can limit the contact with our bus drivers at this point. And then we are evaluating suspending Sunday service at this time. Ridership is very, very low on Sunday, and we wanted to give the opportunity to have our buses deep cleaned once a week, and suspending Sunday ridership would allow us to do that. A special thanks to our solid waste crew who has been picking up everyone's spring cleaning and decluttering projects from being at home. And a reminder that free yard waste pickup begins Monday, April 6th. So for those of you who are at home, next week would be a great week to do yard waste pickup ahead of free time. Flood update, we are fortunate in the current forecast, which remains below major flood level. And then our Neighborhood Services Department is continuing our code enforcement efforts and has actually transitioned some staff into evening parking garage monitoring. So we're taking a closer look at our ramps during the night. Revenue has also changed what they're doing with electronic payments, and we've suspended all of our collection efforts through June 1st, including assessing late fines. So that's good. Reminder on our city facilities. So City Hall, the Police Department and Public Works remain limited access, so they are open, but we meter that to appointments only. The Grand Transportation Center and the Skyroads are closed. Main and Eastern Libraries are closed to the public. However, the drive-through remains open at the Fairmount Library. The Harrison Ramp has free parking. River Center and Redstone remain with no changes. Rivers Edge, Junior Theater and the Roosevelt Community Center are all currently closed to the public. So we had a question from a few of you about, we can't even fathom what our small businesses are going through right now, so what kind of support is in place for them? So from community planning and economic development for those businesses that have loans with the city under the Small Business Loan Program, we basically have a 90-day hold period where we won't be incurring any late fees or any penalties, and we will be allowing deferred payments. The state, we've seen, and we've been pushing out that information, as well as our partners through IDA and the programs that the state has made available. The website is, they had some extra bandwidth open up last night, so it's gotten better. And then I think we're all watching very closely what the federal government will be doing in terms of programs from the SBA and others, but with what passed last night, it's a little early to know the full details of that. The remainder of the memo, I had asked for some additional information from both the chamber and Visit Quad Cities. So while the city's primary focus right now is on our essential services and specifically public safety, our focus with our small businesses, we've allowed and asked for support from the chamber and Visit Quad Cities, they've been doing a fantastic job sharing information, reaching out to the delegation, and so I included a ton of information that they had provided to me that I won't go through in detail because they've been sharing that through their means as well. So that's a big, long update, and we will continue to revise it as things change, which I think the mayor can attest to, being here is about every other hour right now. But as we see communities spread in our, in Davenport and the Quad Cities, continued social distancing, our communications team is going to be putting out more and more information about what does that actually mean? I think we, in conversations even within City Hall, have different definitions of what that means, and making sure that we're all taking the appropriate precautions to limit the impact in our region.
Thank you, Ms. Spiegel. And I just want to add, I have witnessed since the start of this, what I would simply call an amazing team effort from the folks in this building and every other building that we own. The attitude is such that whenever, and as Ms. Spiegel mentioned, the changes come all the time, whether it's through a conference call that we hear something new, or someone sends a text, or a health department sends a memo, or whatever, all you see and all you witness is the city staff here going, "Got it. Here's what we need to do. We're talking to someone now. We do this." It is an immediate, "How can we fix? How can we adjust? How can we do it?" With the understanding that we want to keep our city government working for the citizens of Davenport. Our first line, folks like fire, police and Public Works that are out there with the public doing their job is, when I visit with all of them, I said, "We ask a lot of people right now in the world, the nation, the state, the community, to go away, to stay home, to not interact." But they just keep doing their job. They are the reason we are, government is doing what they do. And our staff just simply, and Ms. Spiegel and Sarah and the folks here and the department heads, again, something comes, something shows up, a new directive, a new policy, a new way to do business, whether it's something that we hear from each day, the Rock Island or Scott County Health Department, or someone else, they just take a note and go execute it. And Mallory, and I want to emphasize what she and the unions sat right in here and negotiated. The whole attitude was, "Yes, yes, yes. Got it. We're here to help. What can we do for the betterment of Davenport?" So anybody who's listening, watching, know that the staff and everybody involved in your government is doing an outstanding job. And I'm just, all I'm doing and all I'm saying here is I'm just happy to witness this operation going on. So, thank you, Ms. Spiegel. I'll go to Mr. Ambrose, and then I'll call on anybody else up top on the phones. If anybody here, I can see if you're wanting to talk, oh, Ambrose then, I got, and I know you're in different places, but I see who you are, so it's kind of interesting. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I'm not afraid to say it, but that's why we're America's greatest city. Time in, time out, day in, day out. Our city administrator has the greatest team, and I am incredibly proud of what we do every day. And the upside is, our great president says, hopefully by Easter, we're going to get back in to Seattle and get things squared away.
Okay, Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a couple of things. The first thing I'd like to start off with is, JJ, we had our plans thwarted a few weeks ago. We know that St. Patrick's Day is your holiday, and you were looking forward to it, and we were looking forward to it, and it was your 39th birthday. And, you know, just a week before, you'd come into a meeting with the largest Red Bull can, the industrial-sized Red Bull can, and we got you a City of Davenport cup with one of your famous quotes on it and some pictures of your first term that you're going to enjoy, and it should fit the entire Red Bull in there for the meetings that we have in the coming months. So, what's that? Thirty-nine years of walking and chewing gum is what it says. So I'll give that to you in proper social distancing terms. You can come and pick it up on your way out and then clean it when you get home.
Probably better. I don't drink that now.
Correct, yes. You'll have the jitters.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
And then secondly, if Brandon would step into the room, did he do that?
He just was, then he would have.
He was just in the room. Okay. We're under 10 still, so. I just found out that tonight is going to be Brandon's last council meeting, aside from the special council meeting tomorrow with us, right?
This conference will now be recorded.
He's going to his new role early, obviously in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, the new city that he's going to, DeSoto, right? Is that right? DeSoto has asked you to come there early, and rightfully so. And I just wanted to say that I've really enjoyed working with you these past almost five years. I've found you to be extremely capable, very talented. You've put this city on really good financial footing. I've also found you to be a man of high character and integrity, and it's a great loss for the City of Davenport, a gain for DeSoto. And I just wanted to personally thank you for your service to the city and wish you and your family best of luck in your new role.
Alderman Gripp, we might have to put a travel ban on, right? Okay, thank you. I just want to say thanks to Brandon too, and it's been, he is a key person. During this pandemic, we're able to do things because the council years ago said to him and Ms. Spiegel, "We need to get this fund balance squared away, and we need to have a rainy day fund, and we, if something happens, by gosh, we got to have some money to be able to rack this up." This is a terrible thing that's going on, but because of your work, we're able to deal with that in a way that we're not asking people for other monies and readjusting. You're just doing it. So, yeah, I agree. A loss for us, game for DeSoto. We wish you the best. Safe travels, and please keep in contact. I know there was an agreement with Linda, so we will make sure you live up to that, or we will put that travel ban in. Thank you very much, so. Anyone, let's see, anybody on the phone have any comments about what Ms. Spiegel kind of talked about, the COVID? Okay, I'm pausing still a little bit. Anyone? Just to make sure. Okay, thank you. We'll move on then.
Mayor, just for the people that aren't here, I just wanted the other council members to know that Brandon keeps leaving the room to wipe away the tears.
Well, that's very nice of him. To wipe, to social distance wiping. Thank you. All right, let's see. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay, thank you, Ms. Spiegel, for that update. Will an alderman move approval to report to the committee of the whole for March 18th? Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have more ayes than we need, but we're good. Any opposed? Very good. Okay, thank you. That's approved. Okay, we have a bunch of appointments this evening. I'll read them all and then ask for a motion to approve or any discussion. So we have the Riverfront Improvement Commission, Neil Cosman, fifth ward, new appointment, and William Ashton, sixth ward, reappointment. Citizens Advisory Committee, Mark Holloway, reappointment, Dave Woods, new appointment. Joseph Olberton, reappointment. Austin Byrd, reappointment. Tushar Patel, new appointment. Jim Hepner, reappointment. Reagan Johnson, reappointment. Tammy Lord, reappointment. Chad Kiefer, or Kiefer, reappointment. Joe Winkler, new appointment. Elizabeth Hodges, reappointment. Kristi Miller, reappointment. Dale Gilmore, reappointment. Fred Clausen, reappointment. Christina Kelly, reappointment. Design Review Board, George Rashid, new appointment. Planning and Zoning, Steve Garrington, reappointment. Barbara Maness, reappointment. Anyone from the council have any concerns with any of these? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? I think we're good, yeah. Okay, hope. Okay, thank you. Those are all approved. Next item is petitions and communications, council members and the mayor. Does anyone have anything for this evening? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, this is a great opportunity for family members to get out and take a walk around the neighborhood and maybe do a little pickup of the trash, and if you see potholes or anything that might concern you, call City Hall or Public Works and report them. And if you plan on having a neighborhood cleanup in the, you know, call Tiffany at City Hall, and we can help you with trash bags and whatever it takes. But, you know, the City of Davenport needs a good spring cleaning, and with people home, I think it'd be a great opportunity, especially to get the kids out and get some fresh air, cleaning up the neighborhood. Thanks.
Very good. Okay, I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
yeah, I agree. A loss for us, game for DeSoto. We wish you the best. Safe travels. Um, and please keep in contact. I know there was an agreement with Linda, so, um, we will make sure you live up to that or we will put that travel ban. Thank you very much. So. Anyone, let's see, anybody, uh, on the phone have any comments, um, about what Ms. Spiegel kind of talked about, the COVID? Okay. I'm pausing still a little bit. Anyone? Just to make sure. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then.
Ma- Mayor, just for the people that aren't here, I just wanted the other council members to know that Brandon keeps leaving the room to wipe away the tears.
Well, that's very nice of him. To wipe, to, to social distance wiping. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Spiegel for that update. Uh, will an alderman move approval to report to the committee, the hall for March 18th? Motion and, uh, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we have more ayes than we need, but we're good. Any opposed? Very good. Okay. Thank you. Uh, that's approved. Okay. We have a bunch of appointments, uh, this evening. I'll read them all and then ask for a motion to approve or any discussion. So we have the Riverfront Improvement Commission, uh, Neil Cosman, Fifth Ward, new appointment, and William Ashton, Sixth Ward, reappointment. Citizens Advisory Committee, Mark Holloway, uh, reappointment, Dave Woods, new appointment. Joseph Olberton, reappointment, Austin Byrd, reappointment. Tushar Patel, new appointment. Jim Hepner, reappointment. Reagan Johnson, reappointment. Tammy Lord, reappointment. Chad Kiefer, or Kiefer, reappointment. Joe Winkler, new appointment. Elizabeth Hodges, reappointment. Kristi Miller, reappointment. Dale Gilmore, reappointment. Fred Clausen, reappointment. Christina Kelly, reappointment. Design Review, Review Board, George Rashid, new appointment. Planning and Zoning, Steve Garrington, reappointment. Barbara Maness, reappointment. Anyone from the council have any concerns with any of these? Okay. I'll ask for a motion to approve and, uh, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I think we're good. Yeah. Okay. Hope. Okay. Thank you. Those are all approved. Next item is petitions and communications, council members and the mayor. Does anyone have anything for this evening? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, this is a great opportunity for family members to get out and take a walk around the neighborhood and maybe do a little pickup of the trash. And if you see potholes or anything that might concern you, call City Hall or Public Works and report them. And if you plan on having a neighborhood cleanup in the, you know, call Tiffany at City Hall and we can help you with, uh, trash bags and what, whatever it takes. But, you know, the city of Davenport needs a good spring cleaning and with people home, I think be a great opportunity, especially get the kids out and get some fresh air, cleaning up the neighborhood. Thanks.
Very good. Okay. I see, uh, Alderwoman McGinnis.
I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, the census tonight. Uh, we are working on, um, a door hanger campaign. We're starting to put that out very carefully to apartment complexes and we're taking great care in how those materials are handled before they go out of the city. And I want to thank all of our downtown partnership for the downtown apartments and all our other apartment complexes that are, uh, the managers who are working with us to do this. So that will get, hopefully we will have over 3,000 out of our 20,000 and we will continue to work on that, uh, the rest of the neighborhoods as that settles, as, as our situation here settles. Um, I also want to challenge everybody tonight, everybody on the council and everybody, uh, listening in. I want you to call five. Um, first of all, go online or go on the phone or use your paper form if you have it and do your census. And then I want you to call five friends. Everybody sitting at home, nobody has a lot to do, call five people and suggest they do the census. So be a census champion. Uh, help us get the word out in this time when we would ordinarily be having, uh, we would be having meetings and we would be having events and we'd be bringing people together to do this. Let's do this virtually. And I challenge everybody in the city tonight to call five people. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Uh, Mr. Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you again for all of your leadership during these times. Thank you to staff for, uh, ample amounts of communication to keep those of us that can't be there informed as to what's going on. Um, Alderwoman McGinnis, you'd be thankful to know that I have completed my census and I will definitely, uh, make five phone calls at least, uh, this evening from home. Uh, my biggest communication is that, um, my award meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, April 7th. I continue to plan to conduct that meeting, but will do so virtually through Zoom or go to meeting, however it is best arranged. I will communicate through my, uh, Facebook page as well as the sick board email distribution list that I have set up. And I look forward to any communication from those within the sixth ward as well as within the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Peacock?
Peacock.
Do you have a comment? Okay. My mistake. Anyone else? I'm pausing, so. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. Very good. We'll move on then. We have three individual approval items on the discussion agenda. The first one is a first consideration of an ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $51,225,000 general obligation corporate refunding bond series 2020 and for the levy of taxes to pay the same. So I'll ask our finance director, uh, Brandon Wright to come up and I'm going to give a little leeway to him to kind of tell us, tell me how to do what we're going to do because there's maneuvering and some changes. So, um, just understand that's what we're doing. So, um, if, again, if there's any mics that are still on, please mute them because there's feedback a little bit. It's better right now though. Okay. Mr. Wright, please.
Uh, thank you, Brandon Wright, CFO and Assistant City Administrator. And I do want to just make sure real fast, John Burtmeister, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay. Wonderful. Excellent. I will need his help here in a minute. Uh, so, so yeah, so today was a very unusual situation, uh, for a bond sale. Right now, obviously with everything going on, the financial markets are, uh, are acting in ways that are not, not typical for, uh, for, for how a typical bond sale would go. Um, we've been very lucky in this endeavor to have, uh, John Burtmeister and PFM engaged in, uh, looking out for the city's best interest as it relates to the bond sale. Um, and so I sent you an email a little bit earlier, but just in quick summary, uh, you have the option of going to the municipal bond market, uh, for interest rates related to our bond issuance. Uh, another, uh, less used option is to do what's called a private placement, which essentially finds a, kind of a local bank type of a situation. Uh, you go and you kind of work with them on outlining what that interest rate would look like. Now typically that is going to be a higher interest rate than what the bond market would, uh, provide for you. So typically it's not used. In this situation, however, it turns out that it's, uh, quite a bit favorable to the city to be able to use private placement. Um, so I'll walk you through the mechanics of it after John Burtmeister maybe has a little bit of an opportunity to provide you some of the details of today's bond, uh, the bond market bids that came in as well as the private placement. So John, if you want to kind of go through that update.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Brandon. Uh, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Uh, so as Brandon indicated, uh, the municipal bond market, uh, I, I became severely dislocated. Um, it, it's been so dislocated, it hasn't been that dislocated since the Great Depression. Um, it, it was, uh, actually increasing while United States Treasury, uh, rates were decreasing. In fact, on, uh, the, the low interest rates, uh, we were, were, uh, received on March 9th. Um, and then the next 14 days, they actually shot up by 2% uh, in a 14 day period, uh, which is unprecedented, um, I think in history. Um, and a lot of the deals that were getting bid either were getting delayed, canceled, uh, one bidder, uh, uh, and if, and if there was a bid, it was like four, three, four, or 5%, uh, because there was some opportunistic, uh, purchasing out there. Uh, so we, we worked with Brandon and, and the city staff. We, we felt that we needed to kind of an alternative for the city, uh, because I guess a couple, three days ago, we didn't know if we were going to get any bids. Uh, we didn't know if the rates were going to be four, four and a half, uh, percent. Um, and so we came up with, as Brandon indicated, this private placement alternative. Um, and so we went in today's market having what I'll call a Plan B. Um, so then if the municipal bond, uh, market bidding process failed us, uh, we had a, an alternative option. Um, so I, I guess it's pleased, pleasing for immediately see that, uh, the competitive market is starting to recover. Uh, we saw, uh, a 20 basis point decrease in interest rates yesterday. Uh, today they dropped, uh, over a half a percent. Um, so we're still up 1.2% where we were from, uh, March 9th. So with the Fed, uh, announcing their, uh, activities as well as Congress, uh, reaction to their stimulus bill, I think the fear, uh, market is, is, uh, leaving the market and now there's a little bit more greed, uh, coming in. Uh, we did notice a dislocation of the municipal bond market relative to financial institutions. Um, and so this evening, uh, you'll see that there are some results of sale and as Brandon indicated, uh, the, the result, we ended up getting 11 bids today. Uh, the low bid was a 2.46%, almost a 2.47. Um, and we also then, uh, and that wasn't a bad result. Uh, we were very pleased with that. Simultaneously with that process, uh, the city pivoted, uh, to see what the Plan B, uh, alternative would, uh, produce. And we were able to, uh, locate a, a financial institution located out of Colorado called Key Government Finance. And they offered, are offering, uh, the city at 2.07%, which is 40 basis points, uh, lower than, and then the competitive bidding. Um, and so when we compared those, uh, two results, uh, this lower bid from the financial institution, uh, it's going to save the city another $1,068,000 relative to the competitive bidding, bidding process. Uh, so it's a little unorthodox tonight, so that we're, we're, we would, PFM would recommend to the city council, reject the bids received from the competitive bidding process. Uh, and then as Brandon indicated, uh, tomorrow at four, uh, the city would then, uh, adopt, uh, the ordinance to approve the 2.07%, uh, which would then lock in the lower, uh, the lower borrowing cost. Um, and I'm also very, very pleased when we set this up in December, we had a couple refunding opportunities, uh, the 2012 A, uh, and the 2012 D bonds. Uh, a couple of days ago, those produced negative savings. Um, and with, uh, the market readjust, readjusting and then with this, uh, private placement, uh, to 2.07, uh, I'm pleased to tell that you, that the city, um, with this, on those two transactions, uh, will save $1,296,000, uh, above, below what you were paying on those previously. Uh, on a present value basis, almost $1.2 million that you saved, uh, at a 6.02% savings ratio. And obviously, um, the market requires a 3%. We'd always like to see five. Uh, so the fact that we're achieving a 6% savings, um, uh, on this transaction in light of where we've been for the last 14, uh, 15 days, um, uh, it's been pretty remarkable. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Brandon or any, if anyone has any other questions, uh, for the next steps.
All right. Uh, thank you, John. Uh, so I, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, but I think first, if I, if I remember correctly, we didn't move to consideration, um, on that. So maybe that would be appropriate before we talk about amendments.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from older men or older women? And I'll just say, great job. This is a great, wait, I mean, I hate again that you're leaving, but you're saving us a million dollars or more. So dang gum.
Yep. That works out pretty well.
All right. Anyone from up top? Public with comment? No public, sir? Anybody? Anybody out there? Mallory?
Matt Dorment has a question.
Yes.
Matt, go ahead. Alderman.
So, just to clarify, if I heard that right, you, you guys are recommending we vote no on this ordinance tonight and then tomorrow's meeting is when we would then, uh, be voting yes to have the bank do it. Is that, or?
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification. Maybe at this point I'll kind of walk through the, the steps that we need to take to do this correctly.
Please.
Um, on our side and, and Tom Warner is listening and can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, at this point, now that it's moved to consideration, at this point, what we would recommend is a motion, uh, that would, uh, that would reflect the rejection of all bids within this ordinance, uh, for that. The, and, and the reason to do that is that we do need to record somehow the city actually rejecting bids in order to make that private placement option available to us. So you would actually make a motion to, to reject all bids within this ordinance and then you would approve that ordinance, that rejected bid ordinance, if you want to call it that, suspend the rules and approve that again. So that is just a little bit unusual, that process to record that we rejected those bids within our ordinance process, uh, there. So if, if someone's interested in that, that would be a good motion.
First one, I'll entertain a motion to reject all bids. A move and a second?
And, and that would, that would be an amendment to, or sorry, a motion to amend the ordinance reflecting the rejection of all bids. Correct.
Okay. So restate.
Yeah.
Again, uh, a motion to amend and reject all bids. So same motion, same, same second. Okay. Voice vote, Tom? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That carries.
Very good then. At this point, then you have the ordinance back on the rejected bid ordinance, which again, with, with receiving a, a, a yes vote would, would effectively reject those bids and move it through our process to record that it's been rejected.
Okay. So we already did the ordinance. Now we're, uh, entertain a motion and a second to approve with the amendment. After, yep. So motion and a second to do that?
So moved.
Okay. Second. Okay. Now discussion, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, are you there? John, you know, the stability of the banks now, have you done this in the past? You, you've been with the city forever. Have you gone with a second tier in the past that Like we're, we're planning on doing now?
Yes, we, we, we have implemented this approach, uh, quite often. Um, and the, uh, and so this is a, this would be a, a loan to the local bank, to the bank. Um, and so the city would then be responsible for paying, uh, principal and interest to the bank. So, uh, the, really, the, the, the financial institution is buying the credit of the city of Davenport and they're fixing this interest rate in. So I think it really protects the city from the perspective that if something's happening at this, at the bank, you just keep making your normal payments and you're kind of insulated from that.
Yeah, that, that would be my concern too, because, um, you know, following what's going on and the stability of our banks. But you're, you're confident that this bank is strong enough to, uh, withhold any challenges in the market?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, John.
Anyone else? I'm pausing to, and watching my screen. Okay. Thank you very much, uh, John and Brandon.
Correct. Yeah. And then, and then, uh, suspend the rules right on that part.
Right now?
And keep going. Yes.
Okay. So we'd like to, I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Moved.
Uh, Your Honor?
Should we vote the first?
Yeah, actually you're right. Yeah. This is Tom Warner. You gotta vote the first.
Roger that. Okay. Brian, please. Voting on the first consideration. Gripp? Yes. Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Done? Yes.
Dorment?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ann Lee?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor. Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion for suspension. Motion and a second. Um, roll call to suspend. Brian, please. Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Done?
Yes.
Dorment?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Gripp? Yes. 10 yeses, Your Honor. Okay. Now we, Brandon, if you want to come explain quickly, we're good though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Your Honor, passage of the second, third consideration.
Okay. So is there a motion and a second? Motion, second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on second and third? I'm pausing. Okay. Brian, call the roll for second and third. Peacock? Peacock? We'll come back. Okay.
Pat just typed in that he, uh, dropped off the call for the voice. So yeah, you might want to give him a little bit to call back.
Yeah, we'll come back to it.
I'll cut. Yep.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobson?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Done?
Yes.
Dorment?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp? Yes. Condon?
Yes.
Peacock? Okay. We'll carry on. 9-0.
9-0.
Okay. That's, uh, ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Brandon and John, for your good update and wonderful work. Okay. The next item is.
Thank you. We'll, uh, we'll be visiting, be visiting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Good. All right. The next item is a first consideration of an ordinance amending various sections in chapter 2.58 to ban the practice of conversion therapy in the city of Davenport. Is there a motion? Or I'm sorry, public with comment, anyone?
Will be considered.
Okay. In a second. So I will read, I said before, uh, like last week and this week, that if there's any public comment, they can email me. I'm happy to send any of these emails, uh, to anybody who wants them, but I'll just quickly read the synopsis. There are 27 emails that I've received and I'll just go then Philip, Miranda, Stephanie, Dylan, Isabel, Dale, Sarah, Kevin, Tim, Bill, Brent, Randall, Chris, Jennifer, Matt, Daniel, Nikki, Katie, Emily, Matt, Cassidy, Carrie, Erica, Becky, Chase, Kristy, Bailey, Caitlin, and Katie, and then Vera French and Robert Young, uh, from Davenport, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and then one, a few from St. Ambrose and Eldridge and two from Rock Island, um, all in favor of us doing this ban. And the comments and summaries were, they've had, some of them have had loved ones who've experienced this trauma, uh, the protection of you, strong message of support, um, and then helping with our evaluation. And, uh, again, Vera French and Robert Young's support. So those are, I'm reading and I'm happy to send the emails specific to anybody who wants them. So, uh, other comments? Anyone up on the phone?
I have one.
Okay. Matt, please. Alderman Dorment.
Uh, I just, I also received a, uh, comment and email from the public. Uh, this is Matt Trimble, who lives in the Fifth Ward and, uh, he just wanted to, uh, state again that he urges us to support the addition of the conversion therapy ban to Davenport City Code and that, uh, he has had family members that went through this abuse and it has no place in our community. So I, uh, wanted to voice his concern as well with this, that he is in support of, uh, us passing this ordinance.
Thank you, Alderman Dorment. I have his also. Anyone else that would like to comment? Alderman Condon? Alderman Condon?
Uh, I appreciate everybody from the public, um, lending their voice to this and, um, it's a little bit of a unique feel in the room here because we don't have a direct feedback, but I guess I just didn't want this to go, come and go on the agenda without somebody giving it a, uh, a vocal support as well. So I, I very much support this. It seems that this brand of prejudice gets special consideration because it's done in an institutional or a clinical environment, but I, I back the voices of our citizens that it really has no place in our community.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else? I'm pausing. And I'll just add my personal also, that I think this has no place and that we should pass it, um, right away, so. Having seen no other discussion from any of my colleagues? Okay? Brian, please call the roll. Dickman?
Yes.
Jobjen?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dunn? Dorment?
Yes.
McGinnis? McGinnis?
Yes.
Okay. Lee?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Peacock?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor? Very good, passes first consideration. Okay, uh, let's see, we have the next one, uh, resolution approving a first amendment to the letter of agreement dated April 24th, 2019 with Main Street, Iowa, to insert the workout room addition project into the list of capital improvement projects to be completed at Modern Woman Park and directing the city administrator to amend the FY20 budget to provide the necessary funding. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Any public out there? Yes, sir, please. Please, uh, state your name, order, address. We have one public coming to the podium.
Good evening, everyone, uh, this is, uh, Joe Kubli, the, uh, general manager of the Quad Cities River Bandits. Uh, for us, uh, currently, we are, uh, at a fight for our lives to, uh, keep our team here in Davenport, uh, with the, uh, professional baseball agreement that's continuing to go, uh, back and forth between Major League Baseball and Minor League Baseball. Uh, the reasoning for wanting to push up the weight room is, um, this is going to become a, a mandate and this is going to be at the, obviously, top of our, uh, our, our, our list of improvements to, to keep us as an affiliated baseball team here in Davenport for many more years to come. Uh, we thank you for the consideration here as, uh, this is something that, that obviously, uh, we're gonna have to have or, uh, we look at losing our team unfortunately after the 2020 season when the agreement, um, goes, uh, goes up for, uh, renewal or, um, they come up with a new sort of, uh, agreement for the future. Uh, obviously, these agreements typically last long-term, uh, this one is currently in the 25th year, um, so we are looking at an agreement that, um, could last for another 20 to 25 years, so, uh, a, a, as I said before, we're kind of out here fighting for our lives with this and we appreciate your consideration of this tonight.
Okay, sir, if you'd probably want to sit there, I don't know if anybody have any questions, but just so you're close. Okay, I see on my, uh, um, motion and a second, okay, now for discussion with my colleagues, I see Alderman Jobjen.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, um, I had some feedback from, um, some of the residents within the sixth ward that have led to a few questions and so I don't know if the gentleman from the River Bandits will be able to a, answer these or if these will be, uh, Brandon answers, so I'll try and go slow and, uh, not overwhelm. And so, again, these items are budgeted for future years and we are essentially just moving up this cost, not particularly adding to the overall cost for, um, for the addition of the flood wall, correct?
So I'm gonna have, uh, Mr. Wright and, um, I apologize. Mr. Kubli kind of stand next to each other at the podium and they can take this on together, uh, whoever wants to answer each question that you have. So they're both at the podium, ready for your questions.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll take that one. So the, the mechanism, uh, and I think the city council is familiar with this mechanism for, uh, many of the projects that we've, uh, agreed to, both in the original letter of agreement and this amended version, really looks forward and says that there, by, uh, by contract, by the agreement, there are certain payments every year that we, uh, make to be invested into the ballpark, whether that be for improvements or for maintenance items, um, but there are certain dollars that are dedicated every year for that purpose. Uh, the mechanism that allows for some of that, uh, for us doing the projects now is it's council approval to say, let's go ahead and do a future year on that obligation and bring forward those funds now to be able to spend them, uh, today. So that, so it's a combination of both, uh, funds that are dedicated to the ballpark, $600,000 for that into future years, um, as well as a half a million dollar project that the city had budgeted for, uh, I think it was our fiscal year 2026, for, uh, better flood wall protection, uh, at Modern Woman Park. There is an area on the backside of the ballpark that does, that the, the current flood wall does not extend to, uh, we currently use sandbags in that and that's the area where we typically have most of our failures and it's also the area where we have to block off one of the, uh, egress doors that is important for exiting, uh, the building and so there only is kind of one main way during a flood event for, uh, people to exit the building. So kind of, it does two things for the city on that one, so it would be bringing forward those funds, um, as well into the current year to be able to pay for it.
So again, Brandon, there will be no, those future years, then there will be no added, uh, cost into that budget, correct? We're just moving things forward?
Uh, c- c- correct, yeah, you, you, you're always then increasing the budget in the current year to be able to pay for that, but we would offset that by several years not paying for it then, correct?
And then, Brandon, a question I had from residents were, is there any money taken from the general fund, uh, for these projects that would otherwise go to other projects within the city, i.e. people are worried about their road not getting fixed as a result of having to do this?
Yes, so, so, again, with those two portions of the payment for, uh, for this, there's first those, kind of those already committed capital improvement funds that we, that we dedicate to the ballpark, those wouldn't be used for another purpose, so those would remain in there at that $600,000, the $500,000 for the flood wall, um, those, I, I guess the, the council could have discretion to change their minds during the, during the six-year horizon to say, we don't want to do that project anymore and dedicate it to something else, um, but as of right now, it's been slated for the ballpark and for, uh, flood, flood protecting that building.
Thank you very much. Um, just as an FYI, um, I did get some feedback, very little, but, uh, two-thirds of the residents that, uh, in the sixth ward that commented upon my survey were favorable of, um, these types of projects for, for the ballpark. Uh, I myself am, uh, favorable for this project, had a opportunity to speak with Mr. Heller today, ask him some questions, um, you know, I, I think this quality of life that we have, and, uh, you know, the use of the ballpark is, uh, something that, uh, we can hang our hats on here in the Quad Cities, I would hate to see it go away, I would hate to take the risk of, of seeing that go away and so again, favorable for the project, um, I know the River Bandits and Mr. Heller have been good corporate citizens, um, speaking with him today, um, it was good to know that, that they have not laid off any of their employees, uh, during this pandemic, uh, whereas some of his colleagues within the Midwest League have, and so I think that's a great show of support, uh, from an employer within our city and our region and, uh, therefore, that makes me further want to lend support his way. And I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Next I see is, uh, Alderman Dorment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, would like to also voice, uh, my favoritism for passing this right now, uh, Alderman Jobjen, uh, kind of already hit on some of my, my main points, but I'd really like to paint a picture here of, uh, the city of Davenport and where we may be and where specifically downtown could be without having the ballpark there, without having the River Bandits with the ballpark, that is the anchor of our riverfront. Uh, it is one of the main economic drivers for our city and for our downtown and so to think of, think about a time where we might not have, uh, baseball here because we don't have the proper facilities, that's something I, I really can't imagine and, and we are, in Minor League Baseball, we are going through, uh, some trying times where it is unknown where, uh, what teams are going to make the cut, what teams are not going to make a cut and, uh, to think that we would even take the risk on something like this, that Brandon just laid out, uh, the money was already slated to be spent in future years, to think we want to act on this now in order to, uh, make sure we are on that list of teams that, uh, Major League Baseball decides to continue, I, I think that would be foolish of us to, uh, have that long-lasting economic impact on, on our downtown that would, uh, absolutely crush it. So I, uh, would also like again to mimic, uh, wha- what Ben was saying about how, uh, the River Bandits and their organization and, and Mr. Heller specifically had to make some sacrifices, uh, in order to make sure that their employees were fully paid and, uh, still employed through the COVID-19, uh, dilemma that we're facing right here and this is just proving again that, um, he is a community partner with us and, and we should be one back to him and, uh, I, I'm in favor of supporting this, uh, resolution to build a space for a weight room and flood wall. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week I had asked the question of what the specification were for the weight room and, uh, we did get them back and it says, here are the relevant sections for new facility standards for Major League Baseball. These are for a new facility and then I had responded back that I would like a copy of the most current and complete copy of Major League rules for baseball, including minor league facility requirements for new and existing facilities. I also am interested, interested in seeing a copy of the most recent compliance audit conducted by Minor League Association Commissioners Office for Modern Woman Park has called out for, in Major League rules, MLR 58B. So if you look at the current rules that, that the baseball team is working under, it has different standards for brand-new facilities and existing facilities. We got back, uh, a short email from Mr. Heller that new, new facilities and existing facilities aren't the same. That's an email, I asked for a document, I'd like to see it before I dedicate 1.1 million dollars of taxpayer money, I'd like to see it in, in writing, number one. Number two, Brandon, that, that money, that half million dollars is coming, where, where we pulling that from?
Uh, c- correct, yes, so the, the idea would be that, uh, you would allocate that money in the current year, right? And then essentially, uh, you would lower the amount of, of projects to be done in 2026 by that equal amount, so you keep a, a relatively level bond payment over time, essentially it's bonds that are funding that. Uh, so by issuing the bonds now, you're essentially just accelerating a little bit that debt schedule, uh, for that and then you're not issuing the bonds later on, so you catch up after a couple of years.
Which would be projects not related to stadium. So currently, we're gonna pull out a half million dollars out of this year's budget to do something.
Correct.
So somewhere somebody's road's not gonna get fixed or some facility's not gonna get fixed.
It, it's not gonna come out of a current project, no, so, so, sorry, I didn't understand that correctly, it's not gonna come out of a current project, this would be an amendment to increase the amount of money being spent in the current year by that $500,000, you would catch up to it in 2026, at that point it would level off, so you'd be riding high for a couple of years on the amount that was spent.
Okay. So, uh, we just recently amended this less than a year ago to add $900,000 of capital improvement money for air conditioning. So that's, that's an extra $900,000 that this council has already put towards the stadium and now we're being asked to put another 1.1 million dollars towards the thing, to, towards a different project. So, you know, I guess, you know, with the, with the fiscal uncertainty of the national economy, the uncertainty of the future of professional sports, the uncertainty of the long-term relationship between Major League Baseball and MILB and the lack of clear, real requirements and not having the documentation, I'm, I'm a little skeptical. You know, I know the priorities of the council are clearly public safety and infrastructure and until we know more things about, certain about the economic recovery, recovery here of what's going on, shouldn't our priorities be police, fire, and public works? So I'm not gonna be able to support this at this time.
You're good. Y'all done? Alderman Dunn, thank you, okay? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, this stadium has been an economic engine to our community for 100 years. We have the greatest, the city owns the greatest minor league stadium in the country. We have a championship baseball team playing there. And I fully support this and our hope is we will continue to have a great minor league stadium and a great minor league baseball team. You know, what was it, a couple weeks ago, you know, nine members on this council were willing to step up to the plate for a playground in a floodplain next to a railroad track, so, you know, we talk about funding, now this is a proven economic engine for our great city and, uh, this is our stadium and I think, uh, keeping it a championship stadium, the greatest minor league stadium in the country is a good investment, you know, and hopefully, you know, Dave will be able to, uh, work with Major League and get this accomplished, you know, if not, then, uh, we'll probably go another way, I can remember the old days when Mayor Mattson was the quarterback on the Great Assumption Football Team and they used to play down there. So hopefully we don't have to see that again.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Yeah, you don't want to see me playing quarterback, I might have done some other things, but that's certainly not that. Um, I appreciate that, okay? Let's see, who's next? Alderman, Alderman Lee?
Thank you. Uh, I like to go to baseball games down there, um, but I don't like making decisions on emotions, so I had the opportunity to talk to David Heller and ask him some very detailed questions. One of the things that I asked him was recognizing that we lost a lot of games last year due to flooding and because of the raising of the railroad tracks. I would suspect that that would be something that Major League Baseball would look at when they're looking at our, um, our ball team based on our ball field. So I was wondering how that would weigh against whether they had another weight room, a better weight room. And what he told me was that as of September 2019, they want to have all the same standards for whether it's a new ball field or an old ball field, so that everyone is getting the same opportunity to develop their players. So that would go into effect in September 2019. He said the decision is imminent on which ones, which of the, uh, teams, and they're talking about cutting back 42 teams to be contracted, trying to save money. Um, I asked him about why couldn't they use the new workout room and the new Y and he said that it's, that Major League Baseball is saying it cannot be off-site, again, because everyone needs to have the same opportunity to develop their players. So, and he also said that, um, Major League Baseball is not going to give any more waivers for not being in compliance and if they're not in compliance, they're gonna hit the hit list, is what he said. One thing that he said that he had not answered because nobody had asked is if he gets a new weight room in the team, there are some other things that are also not in compliance, the trainer's space, the coach's room, the manager's space, and space for a female coach. Now, by getting a new workout room, excuse me, he said the plan is the trainer's space would go to the existing workout room, coach's room would go to the trainer's space, the manager's space would go to the coach's space and the female's space would go to the manager's space. So what he was saying was by giving, um, a new workout room, it would take care of four other non-compliance issues that the ballpark currently has. Um, they already know they're gonna be losing games this year because of the virus, they are, they lost a bunch of games last year because of the flooding and because of the raising of the railroad tracks. Um, I, I asked him, what's the worst thing that would happen if we waited two weeks to make sure we had all the information we needed? sure we had all the information we needed and then made a decision in the next cycle? And he said, they don't know when the letter's going to come out identifying the teams that are going to be on the contraction list. He already knows of a couple. Once you're on the contraction list, you cannot work your way back off. And what he's hoping for is, and I'm saying this is what he's hoping for, a decision tonight that we're committed and ready to hire an architect to get the weight room and the flood wall put together so that he can call the Astros and then they can call Major League Baseball and say, we're in compliance. Because if you're not in compliance, you're going to be on the construction list. So that's the information that I have. And apparently, that in some of that information was not available because nobody asked the question about solving the other problem. So I just wanted to pass that on to you. Perhaps I can ask the general manager if I got everything correct?
Judith, you are correct. Dave and I have walked the ballpark probably 20 times since I came back to work here for a second time in October. So I can tell you currently, you are correct. So the other standards that we are going to have to come up with, we can shift some rooms around. Obviously, it's kind of hard to draw a picture for you over the phone and so forth, but where our current training room is, let's just say for the sake of it, it's on the the south side of the current clubhouse. Then north of that is going to be currently a larger coach's room. North of that is then going to be a room for the head coach. So you are correct. All of that would then shift, each room would shift theoretically one room south. So that would solve all those problems. There is some other rooms in the ballpark that we've looked at, that have talked quite a bit about female umpires, other female staff members, whether it's a coach, hitting, pitching, head coach, or a strength and conditioning or trainer. So those would be solved with having this new weight room. To kind of second what you said about the PBA negotiations, that is a valid point. They could come up tomorrow and say, okay, we're going to extend this for the next 30 years. Here's the teams that are in, here's the teams that are out. So to say this is urgent, yes, I would 100% agree with you. Obviously, we want this agreement to be done as soon as we can, and we want to be one of the, you know, teams that is on the new, trying to think of the quick math in my head here, the new 120 teams. We don't want to be one of the ones that's the 42 that are left out.
Another question. One of the things we'd also have to think about is if it is one of those 42 teams, what do we do with that ballpark? And what would it cost to do the demolition? I'm just throwing that thought out there. I, of course, have no idea what that would be. But it sounds like the decision we make tonight is going to be the decision that will determine, not determine, that's too strong a word, I guess, because it's up to Major League Baseball, but lead very strongly towards whether the Bandits have a chance or not. Am I correct in that?
Judith, I don't think I can give you an exact answer there. I think we can go back to what Councilman Ambrose said was, I'm sure there could be another use for it. You know, I don't know if demolition would be the right thing. I mean, we do have a great ballpark and we're just trying to keep up with everybody else at this point, as we said, to have the same standard across the board. I can tell you this, where we currently stand, obviously, for full time staff members, we have 20 full time staff members. For seasonal and part time, we employ over 250 seasonal and part time over the baseball season. So we do have a big community impact here, and I don't think you would get anything anywhere near that using the facility for a different need. Obviously, our goal is community. As I stated before, this is my second stint with the team. I used to be back here in 2014 and 15. And our goal has always been, you know, let's give back to community. We got almost a half million dollars given back to the community this year. And, you know, that was even looking at last year with the flooding and so forth. So regardless of the circumstances or what we go through, community is always number one to us. And I just don't think you're going to get that from any other type of user that could possibly use that facility.
And I have one more question for Brandon, and then I'll be quiet. Brandon, regarding the budget process, if the council were to vote yes tonight, and then in two months, let's say, the letter comes out from Major League Baseball and the Bandit is one of the contraction teams, can we then amend the budget?
Just kind of as a accounting practice part of it, you don't need to amend a budget to bring it down. You only need to amend a budget to bring it up from that. Certainly, if things were to change with that, we would probably cease moving forward with construction. That would be pretty obvious on that part. And then there would be a lot of other things for us to work through with the team as far as the actual agreement goes for them to be able to use the facility there.
Ms. Lee, are you done?
I believe so. I think I understood what he was saying. So basically, if we were to vote yes tonight, but then they were to go away, then if we spent any money on an architect, but that would be as far as it would go. We could then realign the money to something else later.
Correct, yeah. We would probably just stop on the project. It wouldn't necessarily take council action to stop. If the council wanted to take action, it could. But it would be pretty obvious at that point not to move forward with construction.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Okay, very good. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I, you know, understand, I believe the gravity that the Bandits are facing. I do, I share Alderman Dunn's concerns about the commitment of the dollars that is, that are set aside every year in the city's budget for the ballpark. This is yet another commitment. And I've only been on the council for about two and a half years, and I've seen a major amendment. I sat down with Brandon when this, the last one came, and we, you know, certainly, the Bandits are a great contributor to the city of Davenport, but in terms of financials, it's about a wash. Now, you could say, well, if it goes away, do other things go away? But, and I accept the wash. What I have grave concerns about are this, again, experiencing yet another extension, something coming forward, being put in place and nothing coming out. We voted last year, I think it was for a party plaza shade covering. That's not going away because now we're doing this, something that the, you know, that Major League Baseball is requiring. I understand that part of it. What I don't understand is the commitment to other things and that don't address the maintenance and the ballpark, and the fact we have no, we have, we dole out the money, we have no oversight of these projects. So we're extending, the commitment's out in years, but we, as a city, have no oversight on these projects and their costs. We're just saying, yep, we accept the fact it's going to cost this and we're handing it over. Now, I don't necessarily have a feeling about the flood wall portion of this because, quite frankly, that becomes part of our flood defense, you know, in that part of whoever is in that ballpark. But I do have a concern about this, and it's very difficult for me to support because of that. We have a ballpark, and by the way, demolition would be a distant, this is not something the city would do if the River Bandits left us, God forbid. That ballpark's been standing there for, you know, 70, 80 years. It's not going to, it's not going to be something the city's going to decide to demolish. So I don't believe. And it, but in any case, I do have concerns that we continue to commit dollars in advance in the future. And again, this is my second experience. I've been on the city council two and a half years. So is this going to happen again next year without some, okay, more stringent oversight by the city of how these dollars are being spent? That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you so very much, the mayor, and my colleagues. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you so very much. I listened to the conversation and I, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues, Alderman Dunn, Alderman Lee for their words and gave me some things to think about as we deal with this issue. And once again, thank Alderman Lee for doing a deep dive and asking the right questions about, you know, the River Bandits. And before I go into my question, I just want to go on the record and say I have truly appreciated what all the River Bandits have done for this community and what they have done for the River Front. But however, I do have a question. The question is, even if we do allocate these funds for the improvement for the physical fitness center, once again, is there a guarantee that they won't be on the chopping block? And I guess there's a second question. That list of all the improvements that Alderman Lee talked about, are there other things that's not on that list that we don't know about? I.e., what else is out there, wiggling out there that we don't know about that the River Bandits may come to ask the council to assist in?
Certainly, yeah, there is no guarantee, right, that this would secure the Bandit spot with that. The hope is that it would help, essentially is what the idea is. And then related to, are there other things in the ballpark that need to be fixed? The answer is absolutely, that there are a number of projects in the ballpark to do in the same way that when you think about your capital budget every year that the city does, right? There are lots of things that you would like to be able to fund that you can't get to. I think the last amendment that we did represents the priorities of those items that need to be done on the maintenance side, also balancing that with the team's desire to want to have new things in the ballpark to attract new visitors. So that was kind of what the last agreement represented, was kind of a balancing of those two desires.
So once again, even if we give them the $1.1 million or worth of dollar amount is, there's no guarantee that the River Bandits will stay in Davenport.
That is, to say that they won't be contracted, you are correct, yes, that there's no guarantee that they won't be contracted. And I do want to just correct one idea, which is that the, we don't give the team $1.1 million. That's not how the agreements work, that's not how the funding works here. The city remains in control of all those projects, the city has oversight over the managers, the design, the cost of all those projects, that's how those function. Every now and then, there is a project that we specifically agreed to with the team where there's one that they're going to fund. The Ferris wheel, for example, was an example of that. But that was, that was kind of a one off. The majority, almost all the projects there are done. And certainly, this project and the other ones that were on that list are all city run projects. We maintain control of the funds, we maintain control of the oversight of the contracts.
That is all, thank you so very much.
Thank you. Alderman Gribb.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have questions for both Joe and Brandon. I'll start out with Joe. Do we have any clarity right now on if the minor league baseball season will happen this year and how long it'll be?
So actually, a few reports came out today. There were a couple on, I believe it was the Washington Post and also ESPN, that Major League Baseball is currently figuring out if they're going to do a shortened spring training and jump right into the season. So as of right now, they are talking about mid-May. If that is the case, obviously, everything trickles down from the top, so the Major League players get placed on the 40 man roster, and then those players from there get placed at AAA, double A, single A. So if they were to start mid-May currently, we could be looking at Memorial Day weekend or somewhere around June 1st. There has been some discussions about, do we cut back on off days? Do we play some double headers? Do we not have our All-Star break that we typically have and play games then? And even the possibility of extending the season past our normal, I guess you would say Labor Day week, we typically end that weekend and have playoffs. So would they scrap playoffs? Would they let us play through the end of September? So as of right now, feasibly, we could play 60 to 70 games still. Realistically, I think we'll probably be in that 50 to 60 range. So yes, very optimistic right now about this. And like I said, these reports have been talked about, it's been pretty heavy the last 10 days with Major League Baseball. But the players do need to work out somewhere. Obviously, our number one goal is safety of fans, safety of staff, safety of the players. And with everything that's going on in the world right now, you know, I don't think any of us have the answer at this point of when this will end and when it'll kind of, you know, start to go back to, I guess we'd say, the norm. But yeah, if they're talking about, you know, mid-May, I think they probably have some good information or, you know, they're talking to doctors or people who understand what's going on. So I don't think they would have the conversation if it wasn't worthwhile.
Okay. My second question is regarding the decision on which teams to contract for minor league baseball. When is Major League Baseball going to make that announcement?
That is a great question. They continue to negotiate. I can tell you, we have league wide calls every Friday. So we'll have one coming up this Friday where they currently stand. This negotiation's been going on since October. It's not easy by any means. I mean, we're looking, like I said before, to kind of come back around, as we're looking at a 20 to 25 year commitment here. Obviously, they have, as in they, Major League Baseball has different things that they want, which why we're here talking about the weight room currently. So an exact date, you know, I would hope soon, but I can't guarantee that.
There's not an expected timeline that they've given you?
No, they're continuing to work through it. I mean, obviously, you're looking at 160 teams on the minor league level and 30 teams on a major league level. It's not exactly easy to get everybody at the same room at the same time, but.
So the deal expires when?
September 31st of this year.
Right now, are we on the contraction list or do you think we're not on the contraction list?
You know, not knowing all the standards, obviously, Dave's on our Board of Trustees for some of the leagues and so forth. So for me to answer that, you know, I think that not having these standards in place, yes, we're going to be a higher candidate. I think it goes back to many of the questions that were like, well, what happens if we do this and they still do get contracted? I think that if we have this weight facility, and as explained before, we shift some of the rooms around for different uses, I think that takes us, you know, from, you know, 50% chance down to a, you know, 10% chance, let's say. So it really takes the idea of our facility, obviously, our facility is great, I can tell you that. I've worked at four sports teams, I've been to probably close to 100 parks, and our park is great. It's very good. And, you know, some of the parks that, you know, even in our league that I can tell you are probably on that list already, much different than where we currently stand, but we also are, you know, one standard, two standards away from being in compliance currently of things that we have on waivers. So I would say, yes, if we got this weight room, our chances of being contracted become slim to none.
So do you have to file that waiver annually? Like, have you already filed it for the 2019 season?
So that would be, that would be a Dave question. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't take care of that by any means.
Okay.
I don't have that answer for you.
Oh, last question for you. Thank you. I know this is very difficult to stand fire. So my last question is, if we were to approve this resolution tonight, what is your timeline for getting the weight room built?
That might be, I don't know if you have a timeline or when.
Yeah, I was just going to ask him the same question. I didn't know. I wanted, I'm trying to see if you guys have the same timeline.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, for us, you know, this would, this would need to be done by the beginning of next season, so we're looking at April 1 of 2021, before the start of our season to guarantee that, hey, you know, if we're going out there and saying, yes, this has been approved, yes, we're going to have this standard in place next year, then, right, that would be what we're looking for, April 1 of 2021.
Okay. So my question for you, Brandon, is, if that's reasonable... So my question for you, Brandon, is if that's reasonable, uh, that we could get that done uh, by, by twenty, April of 2021, if it's approved, right?
The, well, the, there are some questions that we need to work through and, and particularly through that engineering and architect, uh, work that's gonna be done. And the complicated part of this is that flood wall. And, and so since that engineering work hasn't been done yet, we would, we would, we would obviously move forward with that kind of right away and then figure out what that timeline would look like after that. I, I've spoken with Mr. Heller about that, and obviously, this doesn't impact the stadium, the players during construction. So the nice part is you can be under construction during the season, uh, and, and not, and not, uh, you don't have to kind of wait for, you know, the end of the season to get started with something. So that, that is in our advantage for that moving forward quickly. Um, but the, the flood wall question is something that we need to address, uh, and that's the, probably the most complicated part of the project.
Okay. And, and you can answer this or Tom can answer this, whichever, if you feel comfortable answering it, then by all means, otherwise, we'll ask Tom, Tom to weigh in. But if Major League Baseball side, decides to contract the, the River Bandits and, and they no longer have their affiliation, what becomes of the agreement that we have with Main Street Iowa?
Yeah, so part, I, I can answer if Tom wants to chime in, uh, with that. But, but the part of the agreement that we have with the River Bandits is that they have to have that affiliation. Uh, so if they go in default of having the affiliation, uh, there, it would, then they would be in default of they're a part of the agreement on, on that. At, at that point, we would look at what the remedies are, uh, relative to that, but the part, it could include up to cancellation of the contract.
Okay. So here's my concern. Uh, I am generally in favor of this. Uh, if, if it's a requirement of Major League Baseball that, that we have the weight room and we want a, a minor league baseball stadium in our community, which I do, then, uh, we need to make sure that it's conforming, uh, by the 2021 season. I'm good with that. My concern is we, we, we expend money and then Major League Baseball still a little chance says, okay, we, even though you did this, even though you spent the money, you're up to code, um, you're one of the teams that is no longer affiliated with Major League Baseball, then we've, we've spent the money and we can't get that money back. Uh, I don't think that the River Bandits are gonna be contracted. I think, uh, the River Bandits are going to be here for, you know, the next thirty years. Uh, I've, I strongly believe that. We've got a good owner, we've got a good stadium, uh, we've got a process in place that keeps, uh, the stadium in top shape, which is what we're talking about here. We put the, the maintenance money in there, uh, so that we don't have to have these tough conversations with Major League Baseball. But, so what I would like to do is, and tell me if you think this is necessary, or we can just do it if it happens, but I would like to, 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 uh, make a motion or, or amend this to say that if, as we're going through this process, if Major League Baseball decides to separate, that we would, we would stop and, and not expend any, any money. And the, the target date for this is by opening day of next season.
Yeah, kind of what, uh, kind of what Tom would recommend with that. Certainly, I, I, I think you could probably add that on to this, uh, to, to, to the, to the item here, that type of language. Um, I, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, Alderman Gripp, if you want to make that amendment, I think what I would say is you move to amend it to say that we're gonna do this so long as the River Bandits aren't contracted and they are part of minor league baseball. So I think that would be your motion to amend it to do that.
Okay, thank you. And, and I think, in, in my opinion, just, you know, my viewpoint on this is you guys get your weight room and the, and the flood protection by the 2021 season, and we get the financial protection that we're not going to, to expend the dollars on an asset that wouldn't be necessary unless we're having a minor league baseball team that's affiliated with the major leagues. So, um, I will make that motion that, um, that we would move forward with this, uh, with the verbiage in there, that so long as the River Bandits are affiliated with, uh, Major League Baseball.
There's a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, very good.
This is the mayor.
I'm listening. We just voted.
I, I don't know the proper, I, I don't know the proper way of asking, but can we get a voice vote, 'cause I don't know who all voted for the thing, who all didn't?
It was ten, zero.
I thought I heard Marion. Ask Marion what her vote was.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm in charge, so thank you. Um, please don't, if, we can do a voice vote. Brian, please. Dunn. Doorman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
No.
Lee.
Yeah.
Gripp.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yeah.
Dickman.
Yeah.
Jobchin.
Yeah.
And Ambrose.
Yes.
Looks like eight yeses and two noes, your honor. Very good. Okay, that motion passes. Um, we still have more conversation. Alderman Gripp, are you good?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn.
I was just wondering, can we get a copy of the new agreement?
Of the new, the new facility regulations?
That's something I have to reach out to Dave Heller for, but.
Yeah, I, I've reached out to Dave and haven't received it, and that's part of my issue is I, I don't get, I'd, I'd like to look at the whole thing and see what is actually required and, and what we actually need to do. So I'd like to.
That's a document I, I don't have access to, so right Dave would have to be the one to give that to you, unfortunately.
Thank you. Well, could you pass that along to them that I'm looking for?
Please, so, so an Alderman asked for that, so please, Roger, okay? Are you good? Okay, and last one I see, I'm sorry, I know one's waiting to the end. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, your honor. You know, it's important that you and Dave realize, yeah, I can't speak for all the council, but I know I will do anything possible to make sure this contract continues with, uh, the Bandits. And I think our mayor will do just about anything too, so please let us know.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Um, anyone else? Okay, I see Alderman, Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you. I'll try to be pretty brief here since, uh, it's been a fairly vigorous conversation already. Um, I don't personally engage in sporting activities or watch sporting activities. Um, so I see this more in terms of the economic development side of things, but there are a lot of people who enjoy sporting activities and go to the games, and it's a really good anchor for some of our small businesses down there. And so I know it's kind of a strange time right now to be doing long-term planning like this, excuse me, um, but I think that we can hopefully walk and chew gum and handle dealing with the current crisis while also thinking about what is a wise way to utilize resources for future development. And this, I do think that this is economic, economic development spending and that economic development spending is always going to be controversial because there's always going to be a question of, well, is it gonna be worth it? Um, and I think that the data suggests that it has and it will continue to do so. Uh, there are places where it's been spent and it was kind of a, if you build it, they will come, and they didn't. Um, but based on the data that we have available, uh, I would say that this is, um, a calculated risk that's worth making. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so had a few comments. I appreciate again, as always, uh, this council having good discussion, intelligent conversations, asking good questions. I've had, uh, lots of conversations with Mr. Heller, um, especially within the last year. I believe he is, uh, a, a real good donor and, and, and does do, uh, a great deal of work, uh, helping our community. I appreciate my colleagues, uh, asking the, uh, deep questions and making sure that we, the taxpayer money, uh, is certainly spent. And of course, uh, Mr. Wright always does that for, watches that sincerely. So, uh, there's a few questions, sir, um, out there. I, I would encourage you to, uh, please, uh, do that by next week, but, um, th- this is an important part of our city. Uh, and I'd ask, that, that stadium is a, is a huge historical piece of, of Davenport, and I would encourage no discussion about anything with the stadium. This is, please, um, the discussion is whether we, uh, improve it, uh, for the River Bandits. So, um, I, I, I support, uh, this project. Just, uh, help us with that by, uh, sir, by, uh, answering, you know, getting the questions so that we can be fair to everybody that's, uh, the constituents of, of my colleagues. So, um, thank you for coming tonight, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and, uh, Dave and the River Bandits, uh, as, as Alderman Gripp said, for decades to come. I hope my grandchildren, if they're here, are, are able to watch baseball in Davenport. So, uh, having said that, no one else, just making sure, last time. Very good. Brian, please call the roll. Jobchin.
Yeah.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Dunn. Doorman.
Yeah.
McGinnis.
No.
Lee.
With the amendment, yes.
No, we already did the amendment. This is on the regular motion.
With the amendment.
With the amendment. We've already voted the amendment.
With the amendment.
Gripp.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yeah.
And Dickman.
Yeah.
Eight yeses and two noes, your honor. Very good. Uh, resolution's adopted. Okay, next item is a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda. There's a motion and a.
Second.
Second. Okay, Brian, please. Ambrose. Dunn.
Yes.
Doorman.
Yeah.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yeah.
Gripp.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yeah.
Dickman.
Yeah.
And Jobchin.
Yeah.
Ten yeses, your honor. Thank you. Okay, all the consent are approved. Next item, we have two items under other ordinances, resolutions, and motions. Uh, we need a suspension to add these, so is there a motion for sus, motion for suspend?
Second.
And the second, Brian, please call the roll for suspension of the rules. Dunn. Doorman.
Yeah.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yeah.
Gripp.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yeah.
Dickman.
Yeah.
Jobchin.
Yeah.
And Ambrose. Ten yeses, your honor. Very good. The rules are suspended, so, uh, the first item is a resolution authorizing the debt service levy for fiscal year twenty-one. Any public with comment? Anybody out there? Nope, okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion from my colleagues? Very good. Brian, call the roll. Doorman.
Yeah.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yeah.
Gripp.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yeah.
Dickman.
Yeah.
Jobchin.
Yeah.
Ambrose. And Dunn. Ten yeses, your honor. Very good. Resolution's adopted. The next item is a motion authorizing the Human Resources Director to implement COVID-19 personnel items as identified, including an emergency leave policy and authorize, authorization to adjust any related collective bargaining, I mean, bargaining agreements as necessary as required by state or federal legislation. Uh, before I ask any public with comment, I'm gonna ask our Human Resources Director, Ms. Merritt, to come up and give a quick synopsis of the items she's asking us to consider.
Yes, thank you, your honor and city council. I'm Mallory Merritt, HR Director. All right. Uh, last week, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, uh, was signed into law. Uh, it's effective through December 31 of this calendar year, and there's three key components, uh, that are related to this agenda item. Uh, the first is expanding FMLA, uh, to include, uh, COVID-19-related items. Uh, the second is an Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, uh, and then lastly, some health plan modifications that we are required to make. Uh, on the emergency paid leave, uh, just to simplify this, it really boils down to creating two separate buckets of emergency leave. Uh, the first is up to eighty hours of paid leave that can be used for a variety of reasons, uh, such as for quarantine, uh, if you're experiencing symptoms, if you have to take care of a child that has symptoms, uh, or loss of childcare. Uh, the second one, uh, allows for up to an additional ten weeks of leave, of paid leave. Uh, that, uh, would be after you've exhausted the first eighty hours. Uh, so, and again, it would just be for, uh, those who need this leave for childcare purposes. Uh, next are health plan provisions. Uh, we are required under this mandate, uh, to provide, uh, for COVID-19 testing and also any related medical visits, uh, at a hundred percent. So there cannot be a member share, uh, cost for that, uh, and that would apply to both in-network and out-of-network. So we do need to amend our health plan, uh, to accommodate for that. So this agenda item, uh, Alderman Doorman had contacted me yesterday and, and asked what, what are we actually approving here? So I just wanted to make that very clear. Uh, I'm asking really for four things. So one is to authorization to create those eighty-hour paid leave banks, which is an, an extra benefit from what we have right now, uh, to create the additional leave banks up to ten weeks for people who need it for childcare purposes, uh, to amend the city's health plan, uh, for the reasons that we talked about before, and then to adjust the collective bargaining agreements, uh, with our six unions to include this benefit in their contract. Happy to answer any questions, but that's the summary of what we're doing here.
Thank you. And I just want to again add, um, a tha, huge thanks, uh, for, to you and to your staff, uh, and again, to our bargaining units, uh, the negotiation that you conducted, uh, to work this out and the whole, um, mentality and attitude of helping, uh, our citizens, our workers, um, and the citizens out. So, uh, I see one person, Alderman Doorman, has a comment.
Thank you, and, uh, thanks, Mallory, for having this presentation and getting back to me. I no longer have, uh, comments here. Presentation was exactly what I was kind of looking for. It cut out kind of halfway through our presentation, so I just asked that you maybe send this out to council afterwards. I think this would be, um, your PowerPoint would be nice for us to have, but, uh, I appreciate the work that you did and thanks again for, uh, getting back to me on my email. So that is it.
Very good. And she's shaking her head. She's happy to do so. Anyone else? I'm pausing. Roger that, okay? Thank you, Ms. Merritt. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Brian, please roll. McGinnis.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Gripp.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yeah.
Dickman.
Yeah.
Jobchin. Ambrose. Dunn.
Yes.
And Dorman.
Yeah.
10 yeses, Your Honor. Thank you, great win. Okay, is there any public with business? Seeing none? Any other reports, Ms. Spiegel?
One thing, if I could have the hall monitor enter.
Hall monitor.
Mr. Wright. So we had planned a big party on April 6. We were going to have Portillo's. We were going to have a very shameless video with the best pictures that we've collected over the years. We'll probably still have a party. We'll invite you to the go-to meeting and eat Portillo's so you can see us doing that. And we will publicly shame you by all the great pictures we've collected and the videos. But thank you for your 10 years of service. We can't all get together, but I know you've meant a lot to this organization.
He'll fly us down for a party in Texas.
Could've gotten him a mug. Save just a million bucks.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, first off, Brandon, I can remember when you first came to town, you were on your bicycle and drove by City Hall. Craig Mallon grabbed you off the street. And it's been an incredible, incredible honor to be able to serve with you. And your leadership has put us in a great position. You know, DeSoto is so fortunate to have you in your leadership. You know, that's why they can't get you down there fast enough, you know? Working with America's greatest city as long as you have, you'll be able to share a lot of knowledge. Maybe after 10 years, they'll start working their way up the list. So, but Brandon, I wish the best for you and your family. You're going to do an incredible job. And Texas is a pretty nice place, weather-wise, but the traffic, it'll drive you back here. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brandon, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You know, anytime you've had a, we've had a question, you've always been able to answer it. As somebody who's watched the budget over the years, quite a few years, I remember where we came from and where we are now. And I just want to say thank you because right now, we could be in a world of hurt if it wasn't for you. So, and did you get a new pair of cowboy boots?
Trying to find a size that fits.
Anyone else? Now, I already gave some of the comments, but I'll just reiterate. An example of your great work is what we're doing now because of, and many people have mentioned the terrible thing we're in, but the city's solid. And this little thing back here that talks about stable, you put that word on there because of the finances, as we all know, up here, where it was years ago. And we struggled. And we, the council, years ago, gave a direction to Ms. Spiegel and you, and you executed that. And that stable part is keeping our city squared away, especially in times like this. So I just want to thank you, wish you the best, and safe travels. Please don't be a stranger as one you can, so.
Not at all, yeah.
It's kind of cool, yeah, we don't have much clapping going on lately, so that's... That's right, that was very good, I liked that. All right. I apologize, Ms. Alderwoman McGinnis. Marion, Ms. McGinnis? I'm typing. She's still... We'll pause one minute before we kick you out of here, Mr. Wright, to see if she comes back on.
I'm here, Your Honor.
There you go, very good, have at it.
I'm sorry, I pushed the wrong button.
All good.
I just want to also say, I said to Alderman McGinnis, I did sit as vice chair on the Finance Committee the first year I was on, the first full year I was on council. And one of the things that Brandon really modeled well, Brandon, I want to recognize you for this, is everything people have said about your business acumen, you anticipate issues, you are always willing to sit down and go through explanations of very complicated things at times. The other thing you do extremely well is you lift up your employees. You do it on a consistent basis. You did it in meetings with, when I was on the committee. You know, you brought people, you brought your folks in, and you really developed them. So it wasn't all about Brandon. You have always lifted your employees up, and you've allowed them to shine, and they're very competent, and you chose them well. But I think the environment you create as a manager, when you do that, you know, creates even better employees. So I want to commend you for that and just wish you the very best.
He's smiling. And tearing-ish. Anyone else, just in case? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Be safe, keep your distance, have a good night.